Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, November 24th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Public participation in this meeting is allowed, and people can attend in person or watch or listen to the meeting live via watching live at Channel 4 or viewing the meeting live at LHCaz.gov. We will now have an invocation from Pastor Ryan Speekman from Living Word Family Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by the Havasu Community Health Foundation Food Bank, Colleen Madison. Good evening Pastor.
I'm on now, right? There I am. Thank you for the privilege. Appreciate it. So, all right, Father God, we just thank you for tonight, Lord. We just thank you for the honor and privilege of being able to gather together in your presence and your name to tend to the business of our great city, Father God. Lord, tonight we ask for a special blessing and anointing over our mayor, Kal Sheehi, our vice mayor, David Lane. Ask for a special blessing, anointing, protection over our police chief, Dan Doyle, and our fire chief, Peter Palafas. And for each city council meeting, Father God, just thank you for a blessing over them and anointing to carry out their duties with your wisdom, Father God, your guidance, including the incoming council members. Just bless them for stepping up to serve, Father God. Lord, we thank you. We ask you for blessing, protection, and anointing over our hospitals as we deal with this crisis that's going through the country and the world right now. Protection over our schools, our emergency responders, Father God, special blessing and anointing over them, all the city workers. And Lord, tonight, Father, I just ask for a blessing and anointing over each one in this room and each one watching online, just for taking the time to come out and help to lift up and support our city and our leadership here. For each one here, Father, I thank you for long life, divine health, increase, prosperity, love, peace, and joy. And again, Father, thank you for peace over this meeting and a happy Thanksgiving for everybody this week in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, thank you.
And Colleen, if you'd like to make your way forward for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Hi. Should I take this off? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I tell you a little bit about my-
Yeah, please tell us about your organization.
While I have the floor. So, we have been really busy since COVID, of course. My food bank, which I don't, probably not everyone knows. I, am I-
Yeah, you can bring it down a little bit if you would like.
Okay.
Perfect.
Is that better? Okay. I manage the Havasu Community Health Foundation Food Bank at 1980 North Kiowa Boulevard. We are, I consider us still new. We opened September 18th, or 17th, 2018. COVID hit, of course, hard, and we have made some changes. It's been hard on everybody. We used to be like a grocery store where people came in and they got to shop for the stuff they wanted. And now we've made some changes where it's a drive-through. However, we still want to let everyone personalize it as much we can. We don't want to just throw food in their car. We don't want to give them things they don't want. We have people coming through. It's kind of, I don't want to say sad. I don't know what the right word is to say, but there are people that never in their lives thought they would be going to a food bank, that are coming through the food bank, that are actually really happy that it's a drive-through. So, that turned out to be good, because before they would have been waiting in a lobby and then, you know, going through a line at a grocery store. So, they're really happy that nobody can see them. And we did, in about May, we did a survey to see what people would want to do after COVID. And I'm going to be honest with you, I didn't count the surveys, because the stack was like this many to stay a drive-through and that many to not. So, I just turned it into the main office and let them count it. It was so obvious. So, anyway, it's going good, and we're getting through it. Right now, we're 73% up from this time last year, which is a lot. The pounds, I don't have the numbers exact. Like I said, I turn my stuff into the main office, but we're over 650,000 pounds in food that were given out since COVID started. And since the first of the year, over 800 and something thousand pounds that were giving out to people. So, that's a lot of need. We did, just since, well, just today, we gave out 60 Thanksgiving dinners and 47 regular, just families. That's not people, but those are families. And that wasn't counting the ones that just came in for bread and produce. So, that probably would have been another 12. And we're only open for three hours. So, that's a lot of people coming through in three hours. So, we're really thankful, really thankful to have the building, which we thank you for, because you have allowed us to have that building. A lot of people think we are the Lake Havasu City Food Bank. And I don't mind that. That's okay. But, you know, when they're writing out a check, they really need to know it's to the Havasu Community Health Foundation Food Bank. But we're grateful to be there. It's a great location. We're close to Desert Hills and Havasu Heights. You know, we're not that far from either side of town, really. Everyone can get there. We're happy to help everyone out. We're happy to be there. This town, I am so proud to be a part of Lake Havasu City. This town is so generous and so good to us, to, and I think pretty much everyone. We've got a great city we live in. And even the people that are just snowbirds, when they come back to town, the first thing they do is call me and like, what can we do? How can we help? And they're on it. We really have a great town that we live in, and I'm thankful, grateful for everything. And I don't think I have anything else to say.
Thank you so much for what you're doing for our community. If you could just let the viewers know the hours of operation?
Okay, we're closed on Wednesdays and weekends. We're open to the, I like to call them members rather than clients. I just think it sounds nicer. We're open for them from 10 to 1, but we take donations from 7:00 AM to 1. For the holiday, like now we're closed until Monday. And then for Christmas, we'll be closed, we'll be doing Christmas dinner boxes along top of the regular boxes like we did for Thanksgiving from 19th, 20, 19, 20, 23, 24. I might have the dates wrong, but somewhere like that. And then closed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, just like right now.
Okay.
And then open again, and then we'll be, we're not closed for New Year's or anything. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Again, thank you for what you do for our city. And then we also do have members from the Havasu Youth Advisory Council, which HIAAC. If the HIAAC members could make your way forward, I believe they have a presentation they would like to make for you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for allowing us this time during your meeting for a quick presentation. The Havasu Youth Advisory Council set out to fundraise for our local food bank. As a project this year, and unfortunately, like for many other organizations, we were faced with challenges of fundraising during a pandemic. However, HIAAC faces challenges every year, and every year we persevere. We came up with a plan to provide a social distance event partnered with local leaders from the Chamber Foundation of Education and Leadership, and held a successful and safe socially-distanced drive-in movie event for the community. Thanks to Anderson Toyota, Friends of the Fair Rodeo Grounds, Lake Havasu City, the community, and many sponsors, we were able to hold the entire event without spending any out-of-pocket money, so that we could give all the proceeds towards a charity of our choice. The event raised a total of $3,460.84 to be split between the Chamber Foundation for Education and Leadership and Havasu Youth Advisory Council. Without further ado, on behalf of the entire Havasu Youth Advisory Council, we would like to present a check in the amount of $1,730.42 to the Havasu Community Health Foundation Food Bank. Thank you.
Yeah, ladies, Steve would like to take a picture presenting the check. Excellent. Yeah, excellent. Thank you so much. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. All right, the next order of agenda on the agenda is a roll call. Ms. Williams, if you could please call the roll?
Councilmembers Jenny Koch-
Here.
Michelle Lynn-
Here.
Jim Dolan-
Here.
Donna McCoy-
Here.
Gordon Groth-
Here.
Vice Mayor David Lane-
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehi-
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the call to the public. This is the opportunity where citizens have to address the city council within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments would be limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means one minute's remaining, and red means that the three minutes has expired. You do not have to sign up for call to the public, but we do have several of you that have signed up, and we will go ahead and just start going through that. Again, and this would be within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. We'll first start with Betsy Payton. Good evening, welcome.
Got shocked. Good evening, Kal Sheehi. Thank you for letting me come here tonight, and also council members. My name is Betsy Payton. Do I have to spell it?
No, I think we're good. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I'm just here tonight because I'm a very involved member of Lake Havasu City. I'm a teacher. I also teach the Patriotic Club Pace for elementary school, and I'm a firm believer in the Constitution. And I am here because I heard that Lake Havasu City might be looking into being a U.S. Constitution Sanctuary City. So, I'm just coming here tonight to say that. I support that 100%. And I carry around my little Constitution book with me. I always want to be prepared. And so, all I wanted to do tonight was say a quote out of my book. And it was written by Alexander Hamilton in 1775. "The sacred rights of mankind are not to be rummaged for. Among our parchments or musty records, they are written as the sunbeam in the whole volume of human nature by the hand of the divinity itself, and can never be erased or obscured by mortal power." And with that being said, I think that we, the people, should remain in charge of our rights and our freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Bill Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell, if you'd like to please make your way to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, city council members. Part of the reason why I'm here again is to suggest that once again, we become a constitutional sanctuary city. I've drafted and put in front of you a resolution, 1776, that states as follows. Whereas Lake Havasu City residents and their city government are resolute in the honoring of Article 6, Paragraph 2 of the Constitution of the United States, which states that it is the supreme law of the land. Inasmuch as any executive order, emergency proclamation, law, treaty, or other legislation is contrary to the Constitution, it will be declared null and void of law. It will bear no power to enforce, no obligation to obey, no court is bound to uphold it, nor any citizen to obey it. As stated in American jurisprudence Constitutional Law, Volume 16, Section 19, no emergency allows for the violation of any provisions of the United States Constitution or the state's Constitution. And whereas we are united in our belief that we are guaranteed by the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, that our God-given rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness will be protected in the present and will be sustained for our posterity. In light of the recent violation of the First and Fourteenth Amendments, our Constitution during the COVID-19 outbreak, we are compelled to reaffirm our right to self-determination, to be free from governmental intrusion or tyranny. In doing so, it is our hope to make our city an example to others of how to reclaim their God-given individual liberty and make our city even a better place to live. Our residents, business owners, and community partners reflect that commitment to improving our quality of life for each subsequent generation. And whereas Lake Havasu City adheres to Title 18 U.S. Code, Sections 241 and 242, which prohibits the conspiracy to, or under the color of authority, deprive any person of the free exercise or enjoyment of their rights or privileges secured to them by the Constitution. Therefore, this city government will prohibit any law enforcement agency or regulatory agency in the state of Arizona from using any resources for the purposes of enforcing any executive order, emergency proclamation, law, treaty, or other legislation which is contrary to the Constitution. And whereas Lake Havasu City defines constitutional sanctuary city as a city that is committed to supporting and defending the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and bears true faith and allegiance to the same, and faithfully safeguards the rights and privileges therein defined by the grace of God. Now, therefore, Lake Havasu City resolves as follows. Section 1, we declare that Lake Havasu City has a constitutional sanctuary city and will protect and defend the free exercise and enjoyment of the rights and privileges secured to our citizens by the Constitution of the United States of America, regardless of any executive order, emergency proclamation, law, treaty, or other legislation which is contrary to the Constitution. We ask that you agendize this and adopt it as soon at the next possible meeting of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Greg Beffer. Greg, if you would please make your way to the front of the room.
Good evening, city council. For the record, my name is Greg Beffer, and I'm a resident in Lake Havasu City. I'm sure you're familiar with me. I'm here tonight, again, to try to entice you to lifting your local emergency proclamation. I was at the last coffee with the mayor. You know where I stand on this. We weren't in a state of local emergency when you declared it. We're not now, haven't been. Resources haven't been strained. And yet, in spite of Mojave County lifting their proclamation, you still refuse to lift yours based on, quote, what you told me was, "out of concern or out of a caution." You don't have the authority to implement a local emergency proclamation over concern about caution, or a cautionary concern over the citizen's safety, where my, your ability or your authority to govern my health and my autonomy as a sovereign citizen ends when my constitutional rights begin. And you know that. Every single one of you do. And I'm up here tonight to address those city council members who have abdicated their leadership responsibility over the last eight months and have failed to bring this before the council and before this public body, and agendize it, and hear where your positions are on it. You stood back, the rest of you stood back, and allowed him to take the heat. Either he was going to be a zero or hero politically, and it's time for you to step up. David, of all the people up here, I'm probably the most disappointed in you. Having worn a uniform twice, just like I did, and declaring yourself to be a constitutionalist, you have done nothing to support the constitutional rights of these citizens here. And what you have done is the same thing that all these other governments and countries throughout the world have done. Go look at what's happening in Australia and some of these other countries. And yet, you say, "Well, you know, Cal, your position is, you think I'm, you know, telling you that you're putting a heavy thumb on the citizens of Lake Havasu." No, I have to admit that overall, we got it pretty good here. We have it great here. But having any kind of tyranny at all is like the same thing as saying it's okay to have a little bit of poop in your chili. None of it is good. None of it is good, and none of it is acceptable in anybody's, in anybody's mind. So, what we're asking you to do, and the rest of this city council here, who has abdicated your leadership responsibility over the last eight months to bring this thing forward, is exactly what Bill just told you. Declare this city a constitutional sanctuary city, so that we know that next time, there is no chance that you're going to coerce citizens or businesses into closing down using law enforcement to do it. There's absolutely no excuse for that. And it won't be tolerated anymore. You know how much you embarrass and humiliate officers, Mr. City Manager, when you send them out to do something that they know is against the Constitution? You humiliate them. I'm not going to, I'm not going to stand for it anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Sarah Jones. If you'd please like to make your way to the podium. Good evening, welcome.
Hello, everybody. All right. I follow these people here before, and I am in favor of a constitutional sanctuary city. Terrorism is not just foreign, it's also domestic. What's happening in our country as we speak is domestic terrorism. COVID-19 is the Trojan horse to take down America and turn us into a socialist and soon a communist country. Is COVID real? Who knows what it is, other than it's 99.8% survivable? We know that because of COVID, our states, our counties, our cities were offered millions upon millions of dollars. We know that because of receiving money, elected officials in healthcare department was happy to implement lockdowns and mask everyone up under the name of help and love thy neighbor. We know that it gave people like Gordon Groth a voice to finally be heard. Making comments in a recent article related to the seriousness of COVID, comments such as, "When you hear the tapping sounds on the glass of people trying to get your attention," or my personal favorite, "When you have the bodies, when you have to stack the bodies in the refrigerator, morgue vehicles jam the hospital parking lots." Okay? Even Kelly Ward has called Gordon Groth out for his extra fear-mongering. We know that our elections have been, are almost being stolen from us in the name of COVID. We know that we have a city council on the agenda that wants to put cameras in our schools. Why are we watching children? We want to say that it's in the name of in case there's an emergency, what happened? No, don't do that. We know that by keeping COVID alive, it is keeping the public in constant fear and keeping the narrative of fear of death at the forefront of everyone's mind. Only makes for a broken public to be easier controlled and prepare them for the Great Reset for socialism and next communism. There is absolutely no way that our citizens of this community will stand by and allow our freedoms and our Constitution to be ripped away from us, especially in the name of COVID. This is why we are asking each of you to make Lake Havasu City a constitutional sanctuary city. We want this for our city, our county, our state, and our entire country, as it should be. By agreeing to this, you will prove to our citizens that you took your constitutional oaths serious and sincerely. It is time, it's only a matter of time before our freedoms are taken from us, and we will all be controlled in the name of COVID. You're going to sit here and smile at me, but what I want to know, are you a patriotic American who will honor your oath, or are you a domestic terrorist?
Thank you, Sarah. The next speaker is David Lerner. David Lerner. David Lerner. Thank you. Janet Grippy. Good evening, welcome.
Hello. There's a growing movement in cities and counties across America to become purely constitutional or sanctuaries. Much like the Second Amendment Sanctuary Movement in Arizona, these localities are declaring that they will live and govern only via the original intent of the Constitution. They won't allow for tyranny, overreach, or executive fiat, especially not from the federal government. The purpose of a constitutional rights sanctuary city is to protect the state and federal constitutional rights of its citizenry. It states that actions described as unlawful will be invalid and not recognized by the city, rendering them null and void. It defines such actions as any federal, state, or local act, law, order, rule, or regulation that restricts an individual's constitutional rights. This is about our rights, which are guaranteed by the Constitution. The Constitution was not written to restrain the citizen's behavior. It was written to restrain the government's behavior. The mayor and city council of Lake Havasu City, Arizona, shall respect the structure and limitations of government as expressed in the U.S. Constitution. The mayor and city council of Lake Havasu City, Arizona, shall continue to operate to prevent any laws that infringe upon the rights guaranteed to the people. The mayor, the city and city council of Lake Havasu City, Arizona, shall not administer or enforce any law that is educated by an appropriate court to violate the U.S. Constitution. The mayor and city council of Lake Havasu City, Arizona, swore oaths to fully support both the U.S. Constitution and the rule of law. I am asking for Lake Havasu City to become a constitutional sanctuary. Politicians have become complacent and have lost sight of the spirit of the United States. This would be a signal to the people of Lake Havasu City, Arizona, that we stand side by side with other cities and counties that have already passed this resolution. We can and we should be a beacon of freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Nikki Correll Garrison. Nikki? Good evening, welcome.
All right, so I'm one of the unfortunate people-
If you could just lift the microphone a little bit. Thank you.
Got it? Okay.
Thank you.
So, I'm one of the unfortunate people who contracted impuntigo from using a mask. And as you know, impuntigo is a bacterial infection of the skin, and that, they thrive in hot, moist conditions. Adults are at a higher risk for sepsis, and sepsis is a life-threatening illness caused by your body's response to an infection. My rights are the same as those who don't have skin sensitivities. My health is being compromised in an equally serious way because 270,000 Americans die every year from sepsis. Another interesting fact, my daughter's roommate works at the Lennon Bridge Resort. She tested positive for COVID. Her only symptom, loss of taste and smell. My daughter tested negative for COVID. That's really, really interesting, because they interact together on a daily basis. That should tell you something. Masking up healthy people is 100% unnecessary and unlawful. Contact tracing should by now be developed to the point that no new outbreak should be occurring. Your mandates, lockdowns, and curfews are not working. Your efforts cannot supersede God's plan. Stop playing God. We elected you to represent us, the people of Lake Havasu City. When it becomes clear that the elected officials are not fulfilling their duty to support the Constitution of the United States, we, the people, must step in and demand action. I do not stand alone, and I will not be silenced.
Thank you. The next speaker is Richard Hawkins. Please make your way to the front. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Richard Hawkins. I'm here to support the resolution and-
If you could just lift the microphone a little bit. Thank you.
I'm here to support the resolution and to encourage you to approve it and adopt it and take it to heart. Now, what I have with me is the history of what you're required to do. It's called the doctrine of the lesser magistrates. In the picture here, it's the nobles of Runnymede that took John, King John, to task to sign the Magna Carta because of his illegal rulings to start to enforce rights for the people. You have that responsibility to protect our rights, our liberties, our property, and life. And this summer, that didn't happen. It's unfortunate. If the resolution was here, people could read it, you would take it to task to determine whether or not higher rules coming down are constitutional or not. It would be incumbent upon you to make that determination, then to either ignore them, to protect our rights, or to adopt them if it's constitutional. But I doubt if that happened- But I doubt if that happened. Now, my wife and I, we take off for the summer in our fifth wheel because of the heat. We went through 18 states this summer. It was pathetic. How many communities, how many restaurants, how many stores and commercial services were shut down illegally? The lesser magistrates through those 18 states failed their task, their oath of office. When you take the oath of office to support the Constitution, you're supporting the organic laws of the United States, not just the Constitution. Common law is part of that. This documents the common law. If any of you are interested to learn what it is, I'd be more than happy to loan this to you. You could pass it through, you could buy it yourselves. But it's something you need to take to heart, understand, and protect our rights and liberties. I hope you do that next time, if there is such a next time, hopefully not. Thank you.
The next speaker, Christine Simmons. Good evening.
I'm just about the desert here.
Yeah, Christine, you're, you're gonna address the, the council, so go ahead and bring that microphone down and-
Okay, okay. But they, they are, they're, they're pretty powerful. Hello, Mayor. I'm Christine Simmons, and I'm here again wearing my mellow yellow, but I'm not feeling very mellow tonight. Our desert is being trashed, as you know, and I was very disappointed that last time I did a survey and none of you have been out in the desert in the last year. You need to go. I want you to mark your new 2021 calendar with the dates, March 27th and 28th. We're having a huge cleanup at Paso de Oro. We had a huge container that was filled. The BLM was so proud of our efforts that they paid the dump fees. Okay. We're out there dodging bullets, that's why I'm wearing yellow, so I'm seen when I'm out there. It was an equestrian area. When I first moved there 10 years ago, all my neighbors were riding their horses out in the desert, enjoying the trails that have been there for many, many years. They can't do it anymore. Tonight, before I came here, there was a huge Tannerite explosion. We deserve peace, tranquility, and our animals do too. It is very offensive. Other cities have banned Tannerite. Other cities have done this. Prescott has a vision. They have multi-use trails surrounding their entire city. Our city is expanding before our eyes. We need to claim those areas now, so we have multi-use trails surrounding Havasu. What a concept. So people can get off roading, horseback riding, hiking, riding their bikes. This is a desert city. I know you think of the lake, but there's also a desert that surrounds us, and it's a beautiful habitat, and it's becoming destroyed. And I think we need to teach the children, so they will teach their parents. You don't leave trash in the desert, Daddy. You pack it in and you pack it out. And I think the children will be our saviors in the future. And I invite you to come and join us on the 27th and the 28th. We'll give you a bag, we'll give you gloves, we'll give you a picker, and you can help join us in collecting the mattresses, the TV sets, the appliances. There is a bulk pickup, there's a number you can call, it's free, they'll come to your house six times to get those things. I cringe when I see pallets sitting out there when my lovely neighbor put pavers in, isn't that beautiful? But then the pallets are left. Nobody picks them up, nobody takes them. Guess what? The kids do, and they have big bonfires, and all the nails are out there in the desert.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Karen Vanderchak. Karen, yeah, yeah, good evening. Welcome.
Hello, councilpeople and councilwomen. Okay, I have two points I wanna bring to you tonight. The constitutionality of a city to override state and federal laws by becoming a constitutional sanctuary city, and I'm going to have, give you a second thing, which is an example of how the position of being a constitutional sanctuary city will look like. Okay, this hasn't, this has really never been done in the defense of the Constitution. Yes, sanctuary cities have been established to rebel against the Constitution, and John Winthrop of the Massachusetts Bay Colony said, "We must consider that we shall be a city upon a hill, the eyes of all people upon us." So we have a, you know, this is a great opportunity for Lake Havasu City to be that beacon, that city on the hill. The general answer to the question of whether local governments may defy these higher powers is no. However, federal measures draw strength from the supremacy call, clause of the U.S. Constitution, and broad constrictions of federal constitutional power. A lawful federal act prevails over a state or local law that conflicts with, poses an optical to, or invades its field of enforcement. The caveats are as follows: The federal act must be constitutional. Federal laws may only preempt state or local laws that regulate private behavior, and the federal government may not cross anti-commandeering or anti-cohesion lines. This is a, this is structural Constitution 101. Now, I'd like to give an example of how citizens in our city would obey the higher law of the U.S. Constitution. And as you might have heard, Denmark last week completed a real study on the mask, and it was quite conclusive, and they involved 6,000 participants. And they, and it was shown that the mask made really no difference. Of course, it got totally trashed by the mass media. They even use tactics to fool us with, you know, this is what they do. They, there's a little thing, I gave you one of these. It basically is, got a little red line, the red line goes down and it's saying, "The people who use the mask..." Oh, it went down, our cases went down. And then the blue here shows you, oh, you know, that it didn't go down. But then the red line shows, and you could see, it says the blue line is flat. This was in Kansas. Kansas real-life experiment showed that masks worked. Didn't take long for the people to realize something was not quite right. Really? Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Well, okay. I just wanna say, we want the ability to govern ourselves, and that's what this is all about.
The next speaker. The next speaker, Stephen Thomas. Is Stephen To, Stephen Thomas? Good evening, welcome. Yeah, if you could just lift up the microphone a little bit, too. Thank you, okay. How's that? Good.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Stephen Thomas, United States Army veteran. I'm a husband, father, patriot, defender of the United States Constitution. Mr. Mayor, when I volunteered for the Armed Forces back in 1980, I was required to take an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States. Quite sure all the elected officials had to do the same thing, take constitutional oath as well. I wanna point out, Mr. Mayor, that had I failed to uphold or defend the Constitution of the United States as an enlisted member of the Armed Forces, I would have had charges brought against me as outlined in the Uniform Code of Military Justice in the form of a courts martial for dereliction of duty. My punishment would be spending the rest of my military career, or perhaps longer, depending on my violation behind bars at Fort Leavenworth, Kansas. That's where all military people go, to do their, pay their time for their crime. If you did not know, that's hard labor. Mr. Mayor, tonight, I ask that you immediately uphold your constitutional oath of the United States, or resign as the mayor of Lake Havasu City, or face the legal consequences if you do not. You owe it to the citizens of this city, and we'll remember you, and y'all too, on Election Day, and y'all that are listening or watching. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Stephen Tumminello.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Tumminello. I'm a, I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a resident of Lake Havasu City, the Havasu Patriots Organization, and Sheriff Richard Mack, founder of the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association. The Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association is supportive and endorses the Havasu Patriots and Resolution 1776, declaring the city of Lake Havasu a constitutional sanctuary city. The CSPOA has been fighting tyrants on a national level for many years, so we have no fear of local tyrants. The chief law enforcement officer in Mojave County, our county sheriff, Doug Schuster, has proclaimed that he is a constitutional sheriff, and the CSPOA and the Havasu Patriots proudly stand behind Sheriff Schuster. The definition of a tyranny is the exercise of power with no legal authority. You have no legal authority to order the wearing of a medical device upon any citizen. You cannot order anyone to breathe carbon dioxide. Humans need to breathe oxygen. You have no legal authority to close down any businesses over an imagined or even a real pandemic. You have been cited that Title 18 USC Section 242 addresses deprivation of rights. Section 242 of Title 18 makes it a crime for a person acting under color of any law to willfully deprive a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution or the laws of the United States. Now, let's go on to the next violation, shall we? Title 18 USC Section 1038 states that false information or hoaxes that make representations related to biological hazards when there is no state of emergency carries a maximum sentence of life in prison. Title 18 USC Section 1040 states that fraud in connection with a major disaster in order to obtain money carries a maximum sentence of 30 years in prison. There is a misconception that there is immunity from prosecution in the event of an emergency. Emergency is the key word here. When there is no state of emergency, there's no immunity. Let me repeat that. When there is no state of emergency, there's no immunity for you. Now, we at the CSPOA and the Havasu Patriots Organization wanna make Lake Havasu City a shining, good example, not only for Mojave County and the state of Arizona, but for the rest of the nation. The choice is up to you, Mayor Sheehy, and City Manager Newsen, and the entire city council. And on a lighter note, Mayor Sheehy, I'm really getting tired of having to refer to you as Covid Cal. I would prefer referring to you as constitutional Cal.
Thank you. The next speaker, the next speaker is Lisa Kruger.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and councilmembers. Great to see you all this evening. I'm here this evening to introduce new chamber members. Unfortunately, one had another engagement and just left, so we will bring her back next month, and one just texted me and said, "I am still at work." So I don't know, because I haven't been in the room, but I am wondering if Naomi and Charles are here from Bradbury Memorial Center? Yes, they are. So I would like to introduce you, if you guys would like to stand up. If you were not aware, we have a new mortuary, it's just north of town, up by the busy bee, and this is Naomi and Charles, and they are the owners and operators, and we just welcomed them to the chamber with a ribbon cutting about 10 days ago. So we're very happy to have them here, and maybe the next time I come back, I will have more people to bring, and I'm sorry that the people that were going to be able to come did not make it. So thank you very much. You guys have a great evening.
Thank you, you too. And welcome. Thank you. All right, those are the speakers that we have signed up for this evening. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? Yeah, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
All right, well, most of you know me and getting tired of me by now, but anyway, my name is John Yola, and I run a group called Zero Tolerance Lake Havasu on Facebook. So we have about 2,700 members. Everybody's doing their best to maintain. My main concern right now is we don't want a one-size-fits-all. We really don't care what's going on in Kingman and Bullhead and all these other places. This isn't like Phoenix, where you have, you know, Mesa and Chandler and all these places side by side. When you drive on the other side of the street, you're in the next city. We don't have that here. We're 60 miles away from Kingman. So whatever we have going on with our local emergency, Covid, whatever you wanna call it, we need to just look at what's here. Because I've talked to people high up at the hospital, and we did have 15 Covid patients, but out of over 60,000 people here right now, that is minuscule. So we can't shut the city down, we can't go back to these masks, we can't do all this stuff. You know, we're just not willing to do that. That's, that's our problem. You know, we're at the point where we're all gonna stand up together, and these people have told me they're gonna take whatever actions they have to in order to stop the city from putting any more controls on us, or even back to where we were a few months ago. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Yola. Mr. Yola. Yeah, great advice, Mr. Yola. It, I've heard a lot of discussion tonight, but let's focus on Lake Havasu City, so there is not a mask proclamation and no government restrictions from Lake Havasu City, so. Would anyone else like to address? Yes, please, just state your name for the record.
My name's Mark Currie, C-U-R-R-Y. I own Just For Fun Power Sports on the south side of town. We do about $3.8 million in sales every year, and a portion of our sales tax pays your salary, so you do work for us. I've traveled all over the world, Venezuela, China, Moscow, Kiev, they all wanna be here. They did. If we lose Georgia in January, then when Kamala Harris takes over on the 23rd of January, we're in big trouble. The way I see it, you guys have until the end of December to make us safe from what is coming around the corner. Over the last 60 days, as the elections come to fruition, I've seen major hits in my industry. People are worried about what's gonna happen in January with their income taxes. You will lose more businesses. We can't go through this again. We won't be able to stay open and get through this. We can drain our bank accounts, but we've been, the PPP money kept me from losing employees. Don't know if they're gonna bring that back. Kamala Harris's running mate, Joe, said he's gonna raise our taxes. I'm hearing about that now. Our customers saying, "We wanna buy a boat, but we wanna wait until February and see how our income's gonna be affected." You have an opportunity to save this city from what's going on in Washington, D.C. Make the right decisions for all these people here and all the businesses in your community. We love this place. My mom was a city councilman and vice mayor in the 80s. You're lucky I didn't bring her here tonight. Anyway, I thank you, and do the right thing for all the folks who are in this room.
This is our president. I'm not taking this hat off till maybe June or July, but anyway, I've always been proud-
Sandy, I just introduced yourself for the record.
Oh, sorry, this is Sandy Seedorf up here. I have always been proud of the fact that we were the patriotic city. I came here in the 90s and got told by half a dozen veterans that our veteran parade was sad. I had to agree with them. So I hung out with a bunch of veterans, and we took our parades to the hilt, remember? Not this year, Covid. Why can't we be the patriotic city and set the example for this new, I can't say it? We need to do this. We need to set the example and be that patriotic city again. It's falling apart. It's falling apart. Prove to them that we can do it. We can do it. The citizens of Havasu can do it. You just ask for our help. Tell us what we got to do. Please, I'm done.
Thank you. Would anyone else? Yeah. Hi.
Good evening, your mayor.
Hi.
My name is Gianna Craft. Most people know me by Gigi. I am the owner of Havasu for Trump, and I also run a huge Facebook page here in Lake Havasu with over 3,000 members, a reach of at times 50,000 residents, 30,000 plus another 20 that come to our city that are also homeowners here. I talk to hundreds of people every week in my shop. Number one, they have asked me to bring you a message. We will not mask up again. Number two, we will not shut down our businesses. And I, as a small business owner in Lake Havasu City, will not enforce any mandate put on my business by the city council. That is a violation of my constitutional rights. And number three, we ask before the end of December that you please put in place that we, Lake Havasu City, are a constitutional sanctuary city on behalf of our citizens in our city. And if you need help, I can do it. I'll help you. I can spread the word. I will get the support for you. We will, as citizens, support you in this endeavor. And we are asking you to please, before this next administration takes over, January 21st, we want to be protected as citizens of Lake Havasu City. And we want to live in a constitutional sanctuary city. That is it. Amen.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
How you doing? My name's Patrick Kelly. Most of you know me as the Trump Truck. I think this Constitution thing is just a no-brainer. I don't see why you would even have anything against it. I mean, who can be against the Constitution, right? But our city's slipping. I hear these things of Black Lives Matter is going to be in our schools and stuff. I mean, what's up with that? I mean, would you guys be standing there like that if the KKK was going to be coming to our schools and telling our kids how they should treat other people? No, we shouldn't have Black Lives Matter do that either. Okay? And it's a slipping. It's a no-brainer. I really think you guys are going to come together and save us. Remember, the Constitution wasn't built on greed and self-righteous. The swamp was built on greed and self-righteous. You know, we, the people, want the Constitution back. And we want it here in this town.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm Bridgette Stevens, Lake Havasu City. I know that you guys put an awful lot of time, an awful lot of hours, and an awful lot of research into every decision you make. So I wanted to thank you for that. Wish you a happy Thanksgiving, and wearing a mask isn't that big of a deal.
Thank you. Yeah, would anyone else like to address the city council during the Call to the Public? Yes, yeah, please.
Hello, my name is James Buckholz, and I want to address-
I'm sorry, so what was your name?
James Buckholz.
Thank you, James.
And I want to address the council. I think that you're doing a good job, not a great job, but a good job. And the problem I have with you guys enforcing a mask rule or whatever is people will sit there and call the police department and say, "Hey, there's a guy not wearing a mask." And here goes a police officer going to go check out this guy that's not wearing a mask. In the meantime, somebody's robbing a store somewhere. So, I mean, we got to get realistic. Let the people that do not want to wear a mask, don't wear a mask. Let the people that want to wear a mask, wear a mask and just be over with it.
Yeah, that's fantastic, because that's exactly what's happening here in Lake Havasu City. So there's no proclamation. Yeah, there's no proclamation for mask.
I got one thing else to say. That sign over there says you got a $1,000 reward for desert. If you made that $2,000 and gave $1,000 to the guy that was reporting them, you'd actually get people reporting it. Otherwise, you ain't going to get anybody reporting it. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to? Yes, just state your name for the record.
My name is Vicki Carrigan, and I want to tell you that I was at Home Depot yesterday. And when I went to walk in, I was accosted by an employee that said, "You have to have a mask on. Our mayor said so." So if you don't think that's happening in this town, it is.
Yeah, they also have personal rights as well, as a business owner, to make their own decisions.
No. No, no, no. No, they cannot mandate that I wear a mask in their store. It's against my rights.
It's private property.
And when they asked me, I said, "I'm sorry, but I'm not wearing a mask." They said, "Okay." So either it's enforced or it's not. And if they want, you know, I think it was more of a control thing than it was something that they were worried about their health. It was a control issue. They didn't care whether I had a mask on or not. They just wanted to be able to say, "You should have a mask on because the mayor says so." Just wanted to tell you, you're being out in the public. People are using your name.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during the Call to the Public? Yes.
How you doing, mayor? City council? My name's Chuck Smedley, Lake Havasu City. Chuck Smedley? Okay. I was just wanting to say, gosh, I was looking through some videos. And I was, some older videos from earlier this year. And I was, what caused all this? And it was two videos caused this. It was from Wuhan, China, and it was a guy on a street corner. And all of a sudden, he just fell over, and blood was coming out of his mouth and nose. And then the security guard at his desk, he fell off, bleeding from the mouth and nose. They scared the entire world for two weeks. They shut down the world. We've never seen those videos again. And those symptoms are not happening here. But that's how they shut us down. They did it with two videos. Remember?
Yeah, Chuck, you need to address the city council. Thank you.
What? I'm sorry, I'm addressing everybody.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to say that. People have got to remember. And also the signs on peoples, on businesses that says, "Please wear a mask out of respect for your neighbor." It's not disrespectful to not wear a mask. And we can't pit citizens against citizens over this psyop that's going on, that they're being told, "You're being disrespectful if you're not wearing a mask." So I've now got this new power to throw you out of my business. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Lerner. I'm going to reclaim my three minutes and pass it on to my member here. Okay?
We need to, you're not up on the law, Mr. Mayor. This lady had the same experience that I had, and I think Steve Thomas had, in another hardware store here in town. They are not a private enterprise. They are offering public accommodation. They think they can reject you from the store. They cannot. That violates the 1964 Civil Rights Act. I filed complaints against many businesses in California and in Arizona when they would not let me in without a mask on. I filed under the Department of Justice, DOJ, and the ADA. It's a $75,000 fine for the first offense, $150,000 fine for the second offense. So when you tell her that they're a private company, that doesn't hold water here. That's not correct. Public accommodation. When they open their doors, they have to treat everyone equally. They can't offer to go shop for you. That's discrimination. And now, because what you did last year, we are going into, you've got the stores. I can't go into Verizon. I can't go into Big Five Sporting Goods. Can't go into that hardware store, because you've got them trained to be your enforcers. And you know what we're going to do? We're going to blacklist these stores. We're going to get, we're going to get together, our group, and we're going to, in fact, I'm talking to the owner of that hardware store. He's based in Huntington Beach tomorrow. He's got 18 stores, and I'm telling him, he's going to be on the blacklist. We're not going to shop there. I got surrounded by like 10 masked Nazis in that store. It was very intimidating, because I wouldn't wear a mask in there. And he wouldn't even listen to my health exemption. I have a valid health exemption, which I shouldn't have to use. Everyone has a health exemption. Plus, we have our constitutional right not to be mask-muzzled. So you guys need to get up on the law. You obviously don't know the law here, and you don't know the Constitution. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Dennis Murdock, I wasn't actually going to speak until you said your idiotic statement. It was completely untrue. I was actually physically attacked in Smith's store last Thursday for doing nothing other than not wearing a mask and having a Trump hat on. So when you think it's okay and everything's just honky-dory, and you just let everybody know that just let, let live and be, and there's no problems, if I wasn't as strong as I was, I would be in the hospital right now. That guy seriously wanted to injure me. And 15 people wish that I'd get COVID and die, just because I don't have a mask on, because of you and your stupid-ass rules.
Hi, Charlene Rossi. I'm actually a California resident, but we own a home here. Our goal is to retire. Please protect Havasu. Do not make us look for another place to retire, because we escaped the insanity of California to come here. Do not become one of those morons that don't have a brain and don't think and apply science. Okay? People can wear masks if they want to. You're not telling them they can't. But don't tell them they have to. It's their choice. It's something that I'm starting to wonder if we're losing, because we're not given choices anymore. We're told we have to do things. That's not the America I know. That's not the America my husband came from another country to live in, that he's disgusted with the turn of events, the direction this country's going, the socialism that's in every state. Do not allow that to take hold in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone? Hi.
Hi, guys. My name's Laurel Ice Frat. I'll start off. God bless you all. God bless everybody in this room, and God bless America. I recently relocated back here after being gone for 16 years. But I grew up coming here from the 1970s. Had a horse ranch out here, was very active in the community. Raised all three of my children here. Two boys, active duty in the military today. I'm not here to talk so much about, thank you. I'm not here to talk so much about the masks, though I do have my own opinions on it, and I believe that it's everybody's constitutional right to mask up or not. And personally, breathing your own CO2 is not healthy. But I know that we're all in a deadlock here, as far as what we can do and what we cannot do. And I'm sorry about that. What I'm here to talk about, I was asked to talk about the POD protecting our deserts. I have a horse that was recently boarded up there at Colt Lane, up there at Bison. And while I was up there in the weekends, it just absolutely blew my mind to hear all the gunshots and gunfire. And there were even a couple of times that I literally would hear a bullet was by me. And then going out there in the desert, you can see where people are. You're nodding your head so you know what I'm talking about, so I know this is nothing new. And just whatever we can do, you got my name, you got my number. Call me. I'm a good set of hands and feet and a brain. But we need to do something to protect our asset, which is this beautiful countryside that surrounds us. Because once that desert is abused and trashed and beaten, it's gone. It's gone forever, hundreds and thousands of years of treasures. So I just wanted to bring that up and to have people really take a good look about a shooting range that's safe. I know they've got one down at Sarah Park, but people are taking TVs and everything out there in the desert and shooting them, leaving everything out there. And then you've got people that might want to hike, ride horses. I wouldn't be caught dead riding my horse out there now, just for fear of a stray bullet, because you don't know. They don't hear us coming. So and then the people coming in with their RVs and just camping everywhere and finding trash along the roads, it literally broke my heart to come into town and see that. But I feel wonderful to be back, and God bless you all. And let's just all agree that we can disagree, but let's work together to keep Lake Havasu wonderful and make this place wonderful.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Call to the Public? All right, seeing them, we'll close the in-person Call to the Public. We are also accepting public comment via email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. Prior to the meeting, I believe we do have one person that sent in a public comment.
Yes, one comment was received on Tuesday, November 24th, 2020, with the subject line of constitutional integrity. Mayor Sheehy and council, one thing a nation as divided as we are can universally agree upon is that America is in a crisis. Some will identify that crisis as COVID-19, while others will point to a loss of freedoms, forced lockdowns, restrictions, and mandates. Both groups are ignoring the root cause of these symptoms, the undermining of our Constitution. When I define COVID-19 as a symptom, I am referring to the public's overreaction to the virus, which has been fueled by politicians issuing unconstitutional edicts that only serve to instill a sense of panic and needless fear. Now, even, even now, as flu cases rise again, senseless governmental restrictions intensify, thereby increasing the public's anxiety. It's both harmful and counterproductive. After the events of the past nine months, including the recent attempted electoral overthrow of our government, there can be no doubt that nefarious forces are working to assume authoritarian control of America. This is not a melodramatic statement. It's a fact. And if we, as a society, don't take immediate action to reverse this trend, our country as we know it will be lost forever. This is exactly how socialism begins, and a quick review of any history book will confirm that. Spoiler alert, it doesn't end well. The quickest way to destroy a nation is to break the will of its people and demolish its very foundation. People are living in a perpetual state of irrational fear of a flu virus with a 99.97% survival rate and are not only willing, but eager to surrender their rights and freedoms in exchange for the false illusion of safety. Meanwhile, elected officials react by enthusiastically undercutting the Constitution of the United States in order to appease them with more arbitrary restrictions, ostensibly intended as a means to somehow control the virus. The Constitution is the bedrock of our nation was built on, and it saddens me that so many perceive it to be nothing more than an antiquated, quaint notion that can be disregarded at will. This must stop. Every elected official in our country has taken an oath to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States. It seems that many have forgotten their oath. As a veteran, I took the same oath before serving my country. And on the whole, I believe veterans revered the oath much more than others. We took the oath before we shipped out to Vietnam. You took the oath before you moved into your new office. We are not the same. To take control of the situation, we must once again adhere to our core values and the supreme law of the land, the Constitution of the United States. As Edmund Burke stated, "All that is necessary for evil to succeed is that good men do nothing." It has to start somewhere. I urge you to declare Lake Havasu City a constitutional sanctuary. I hope you have the courage to do so, because the future of our children and our country depends on it. The world is watching. Submitted by Ron Danielson.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. That will conclude our Call to the Public. Moving on to Item 6 is Presentations to Outgoing Council Members. So tonight is a special night. We're celebrating the accomplishments and leadership of two outgoing council members. Councilmember Donna McCoy was first elected in 2012. Councilmember McCoy was re-elected again in 2016. She has been engaged in many facets of our community, including the sewer refinancing, Vision 2020, and America's Best Community Competition. She's a member of the Tri-City Council, a council liaison and board member for Go Lake Havasu, the WACOG Community Action Board, Mojave County Advisory Council, and the Regional Council on Aging. She has also served on the Chamber Board of Directors and the Lake Havasu Metropolitan Planning Organization, and has been a huge, huge supporter of our veterans and our veterans organizations. Councilmember McCoy has had been a solid leader, serving our community for eight years as a council member. She has served with current council- She has served with current council members Jenny Koch, Michelle Lynn, David Lane, Gordon Groat, Jim Dolan, and of course, myself as mayor. She has also served with Mayor Mark Nixon, joining us today via Zoom, and also former council members David McAtlin, who was here. McAtlin, councilmember, former councilmember, David McAtlin, welcome. Former councilmember Dean Barlow, who is also here, welcome. And also former councilmember Don Callahan, who was trying to make it. And also former councilmember Crystal Alger, who is in the back as well, so good evening and welcome. Thank you for, for being here to celebrate Donna. They're all here to help Kimmer Murray and celebrate your leadership. So thank you all for being here. I'm now gonna turn it over to Mayor Nixon, if you'd like to say a few words about Councilmember, Councilmember McCoy.
There we go, I think I got it off mute.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for your service to the community, it is appreciated. I also wanna congratulate all the incoming new council members. So if you just kinda follow what Donna has done over the last years in terms of homework, et cetera, you'll do well. As you mentioned, Mayor, Donna served with me from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and eighteen. When she decided to run, she actually owned a restaurant with my wife. That restaurant has closed some time ago, but she worked very hard to get up to speed on issues. And one of the things she used to do is whenever I came in for lunch, she would corner me. And while my soup was getting cold, she would ask me about a thousand questions, which just shows her dedication to making sure she was up to speed on all the issues, knew the answers, and felt that she could be comfortable running for city council. And you know, during her two terms, Donna, you've always, always done your homework. I can tell you that that is very much appreciated by your fellow council members, and of course, Mayor Sheehy. Donna was also very active in the community, she attended numerous events. She was vice mayor for a period of time, and I could always count on her to make sure that when I wasn't available, she was. She's also, you know, even more importantly, she was always available to the citizens of Lake Havasu City. She considered all sides of an issue and made what I would consider a solid decision. Donna, I wish you the best in your retirement. Eileen and I look forward to seeing you again and traveling with you and your husband, Kim, in the very near future. So again, congratulations.
Thank you. And with that, Councilmember McCoy, would you like to say a few words?
Okay, I said I wasn't gonna cry. Thanks a lot, Mark. I, I just wanna say, it's, it's really been an incredible honor to represent people of this city. I've been here for twenty years, I love this town. I have to admit, I did come here protest, and this was, you know, kind of not my idea of what it would be. But once I got here, I, I did fall in love with this incredible city and the individuals and the people that are here. It's been great, I've made so many wonderful friends, met so many great people, and it's been such a pleasure. I just can't, can't thank you enough for the opportunity to do this. And I'm not going anyplace, you know, I intend to live here, and so you're gonna see me on the other side often. But I will be kind, that's the one thing I would like to say to people, you know. I think the council listens, and they take in everything that's said, but I do wanna remind people that, you know, being kind is also something that's very important. There are people I wanna thank, and I, I know I won't hit them all, but I'm just got a few. First off, my husband, Kim McCoy, he has stood by me, driven me to every meeting, every conference. He has been a part, a major part, and now I get to be his tag-along person as he spends the next two years as the Marine Corps Commandant. So thank you, darling, I appreciate it, everything you've done. Mark and Eileen Nixon, oh my God, I mean, they're my mentor, my friend, my confidant. You know, I've had many conversations in the, as he said, the poor guys that came in at the coffee shop, they came in for lunch, and I would have a list, and I would go through, and, and it wasn't just Mark, it was all of them that came in. And so they helped me to grow into this job. People that helped with the support, Dub and Dot Campbell, they were incredible, Mark Calper, Alan Atwell, Sonny Borelli. Good old Sonny, he had a lot to say also. Dale Bailey was a wonderful person, and then people that answered my questions, Charlie Cassens, Dean Barlow. Thank you so much for being here today, that means so much. Don Callahan, David McAtlin, you guys have just been wonderful. The city staff has been supportive, anytime you had a question or information, they were right there for us. Kelly, you and IT, I owe you everything. You kept me going with my not being able to handle techie things. And, and you know, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say a special thank you to Jerry Bracchamani, who keeps us all where we're going, and we've become such wonderful friends. And I just will miss seeing you some. No, I'm gonna miss everyone so much, but like I said, I'm gonna be around, and I just thank you, Cal, David, Jenny. You guys have been my rock, thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We do have some presentations, but we'll do that in a, in a couple of minutes. Now, Councilmember Gordon Groat was first elected to the Lake Havasu City Council in two thousand and sixteen. Councilmember Groat was a member of the Tri-City Council and served as one of the council liaisons to the Mojave County Water Authority. Councilmember Groat has served on the Lake Havasu City Council as a council member for four years. And Councilmember Groat has served with current council members Jenny Koch, Donna McCoy, Michelle Lynn, David Lan, Lane, excuse me, Jim Dolan, and then of course, myself as mayor, but Councilmember Groat also served with Mayor Mark Nixon as well for, for two years. All are here today, and we thank Gordon for his contributions to the Lake Havasu City Council. And with that, Councilmember Groat, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, is my audio okay?
Yes, it is.
Well, I just have a brief message. Be generous with your praise, remember, awesome people do not just happen, have insatiable curiosity. Relatively, relativity applies to physics, not ethic. And you cannot create experience, must undergo it, so that's my segue to the incoming council members. To our new members of council, Nancy and Cameron, I say good luck, and I wish you well in this exciting voyage you are about to begin. To those continuing to serve and those departing, I wish you all the best, and I'm deeply honored to serve with all of you. To administration and staff, each of you is very lifeblood upon which our city relies, is the very essence of the community. I consider myself immensely lucky to have had the privilege of knowing so many of you, and I extend my best wishes to all of you and to your family. I'm told your pay adjustments have actually hit your paycheck now, but never forget that we all know your worth is measured far beyond dollars and cents. You are priceless to all of us, but it doesn't hurt to add a few dollars and cents now and again. And finally, to my fellow citizens, if you want others to be happy, practice compassion. If you want to be happy, practice compassion. If you focus on judging people, you will have no time to love them. Negative thoughts are like bricks that you carry around with you, you can always just set them down. Choose to be optimistic, it's actually easier, and it just feels better. And with that, I wish you all a due bon voyage, salut, et bonne espoir. With great appreciation and profound humility, I now take my leave of you and depart. Long life, health, happiness, and prosperity. Au revoir.
Thank you, Councilmember Groat, and thank you to Councilmember Donna McCoy and Councilmember Gordon Groat for your leadership. We have a few gifts that I'm gonna try and get on video. First, we have a beautiful clock to commemorate you, Councilmember McCoy, saying in appreciation of your dedicated service to the citizens of Lake Havasu City as a council member from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty. And then we also have a similar clock for Councilmember Groat, saying, presented to Gordon Groat in appreciation for your dedicated service to the citizens of Lake Havasu City as a council member, two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty. And then we also have, for both of you, a key to the city, presented to Councilmember McCoy and Councilmember Groat, a key to Lake Havasu City. And then we also have a gift bag that will give you, we're gonna take a small break after we do the oath of office. We have a gift bag, but we've created memorable books for each of you that commemorate your years of service to Lake Havasu City. And we have some, some cards and some final thoughts in there for both of you. So again, thank you so much to both of you for your leadership in Lake Havasu City and your commitment to the citizens of Lake Havasu City, we appreciate it. All right, we will now move on to item seven, which is to administer the oath of office to our newly elected council members. Judge Kalali, if you would like to make your way forward, I do have a microphone. And we'll start with Councilmember-elect Nancy Campbell, and we'll just go alphabetical order. Oh, yeah, and then you're, you're next. Okay, okay.
Councilmember Campbell, if you could please step forward. And see if I can do this with the mic and raising your hand, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nancy Campbell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And will defend them.
And will defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, Councilmember, if you'd like to just make your way, and you can actually just pick any of, any of the chairs. And then next we'll do Councilmember-elect Cameron Moses.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Cameron Moses.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
The state of Arizona.
That I bear true.
That I bear true.
Faith and allegiance.
Faith and allegiance.
To the same.
The same.
And will defend them.
And will defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And Vice Mayor David Lane. And then Councilmember Moses, you can make your way to the dais as well.
We meet again. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I state your name. I, David Lane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I bear true.
That I bear true.
Faith and allegiance.
Faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And will defend them.
And will defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you, Judge Kalali, and congratulations to the newly sworn-in council members. And once again, a big thank you to Councilmember, outgoing Councilmember McCoy and Councilmember Groat. And then a big thank you to Mayor Nixon for joining us this evening, former Councilmember David McAtlin for joining us, former Councilmember Dean Barlow, and former Councilmember Crystal Alger, thank you so much for, for being here as part of this. With that, we are gonna take a small break, there are some refreshments in the back, and we just have to do some procedural things here to make all of the computers work with our new council members, but we'll be back to do the business of the council in about five minutes or so. So enjoy, thank you, and again, thank you for being here. All right, we are now back from break, and welcome to Councilmember Moses and Councilmember Campbell, and congratulations again, Vice Mayor Lane. If you would like to say just a couple of words, we'll start with Vice Mayor Lane to say a few words, and then we'll move over to Councilmember Campbell, and then Councilmember Moses to say a few words.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, the room got quiet in here. Yeah, and empty too. So first off, congratulations to our two newest council members. You got your work cut out for you, and now it's no longer this is what I want to do, this is what I'm doing. So you definitely, now you get to put, put your money where your mouth was. So congratulations, and looking forward to working with you over the next four years. I, I wanna say thank you to a lot of people. I'm not gonna go through all the names, because I know I would forget somebody. But I do have to mention my wife, because I couldn't have done this without her over the last four years. It's, it's really been a good road, and when I said I was gonna run for reelection, she said, will it keep you out of the house? And I said, yes, and she said, please do. No, I'm kidding aside. No, it's been a good journey, I've had so much support from this council, so much support from the citizens of this city, from my family, from my friends, and the city staff. You took somebody that didn't know anything, and you've really helped me over the last four years to do my job, and I could not have done it without the city staff and without the support of the people here in the city of Lake Havasu. So I look forward to working with you all again for the next four years, and will help keep the city the wonderful place it is that we all know and love, and we all love living here. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and again, congratulations. And Councilmember Campbell.
Good evening, everyone, and I like, Council, are you Vice Mayor still? Yeah, Vice Mayor, okay, Vice Mayor Lane. I remember going to Chip and asking my husband, Chip, what do you think about this? And I was surprised when he said, I think you'd be great, and are you gonna be out of the house more often? Anyways, I just wanna remind everybody out there why I ran for city council, and it was for your family and for mine. And I do believe we have a legacy behind us and a future we need to protect. And I feel confident with all the current council and mayor that we will, everybody will be just fine. We'll, we'll work through everything that's been out there and causing us big headaches, and we'll come together for you. I also want to congratulate, she's left, and thank Councilmember Groat and Councilmember McCoy for their years of dedication, and I realize now, sitting on this desk for the first time ever, how much time and passion and determination and love for their community they've had, and they were an asset for this community, and they will always be that in my heart. I also want you guys to all know, I believe Lake Havasu City's biggest asset to this community is the people. And I'm incredibly thankful for everybody that got out and voted, I'm gonna get a little emotional too, donated to the campaign, because it's completely an honor to be here, and very humbling, and thank you very much.
Excellent, congratulations to you as well, thank you. Councilmember Moses.
Yes, hi, thank you. I too would like to really thank my wife for supporting me all through this. She does not want me to leave the house, we have two little ones at home, so she needs all the help we can get. But, but to be completely honest, a little more serious, I, I wouldn't be able to do what I do without knowing that I got somebody fantastic at home, making sure our family's taking. I wouldn't be able to do what I do without knowing that I got somebody fantastic at home, making sure our family's taken care of. So thank you, Kelly. Also like to thank my parents who are also here for instilling a great sense of community, always growing up, that we're entitled to take care of the people, we're supposed to take care of the people around us. Thanks, Mom and Dad. I like to thank, there's so many people who helped me through the campaign and really kind of learn about the city. My campaign team, Brian Springberg, Donna McCoy, helped out tremendously, Eileen Nixon, Wendy Moore, and Dustin Runyon, all helped guide me in the direction and really helped find my way and learn my path forward. It wasn't always easy, but it was well worth it by the time I got here. And I'm just so proud to serve up here with every single one of you. We've all had great conversations. I look forward to butting heads with you a little bit, disagreeing a little bit. But friction makes fire, and I think we're going to do a lot of really good things for the city. So I look forward to getting to work with every single one of you. City and all, all of our, we got great employees, and we're going to do some magical things. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, we'll move on to item eight on the agenda, the consent agenda. I would like to pull item 8.2 for separate discussion. Are there any other items that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda for separate discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Yes.
Motion.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda minus item number 8.2 as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. It'll just take a second. Councilmember Lynn.
Aye.
Thank you. And Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, we'll now address item 8.2, adopt resolution number 20-3454, approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Lake Havasu Unified School District for the disclosure of school surveillance video footage in instances of catastrophic health and safety emergency. I pulled this item just because it was mentioned during call to the public separately, so that we could have a discussion if the council so wished to do. So Ms. Gary, if you could please present this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor and councils. The city was addressed by the district, the school district, about entering into an agreement that would allow the city to be able to access surveillance video when necessary. And so that resulted in this IGA. So recently, the school upgraded all of their surveillance and added new surveillance videos to their campuses. And then, so under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, the district can only disclose the surveillance video footage to the city's police department under very limited circumstances, which falls into the category of catastrophic health and safety emergencies. This includes such things as natural disaster, a terrorist attack, or a campus shooting. During this time, if one of these events should arise, then the district cameras may be shared with the appropriate representatives at the city's police department for the sole purposes of addressing that health or safety emergency at that time. So it's not something that the city requested, it's not the city's surveillance videos, it's the district's surveillance videos. They will provide us access only in these very limited circumstances. And that access will only be provided to the police department through a passcode that will be provided to them by the district. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And just for those at home, of course, just to renew that the school district is a separate political subdivision from Lake Havasu City with its own elected school board members by the citizens. So they came to us with this need, and so we're addressing that. So do any councilmembers have any questions for Ms. Gary?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. Is this thing working?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Jerry said they couldn't hear me earlier. I just wanted to make the comment that, because there was a comment on here, we are not going to be monitoring school cameras. As our city attorney said, the police department has no desire to monitor school cameras. The city will not be monitoring school cameras. This is only in the event that there is some catastrophic emergency.
Thank you. Is that better? Yeah, my microphone's not working. If there's a catastrophic emergency at the school, it's a no-brainer that our police department should have access to video surveillance on an ongoing basis as the emergency is happening. So contrary to what was said earlier at a public comment, I think somebody had misconceptions. So I just wanted to clarify that. This is for the safety of our children should there ever be a catastrophic event, so that our police department can respond honestly and correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we also did not receive any written public hearing on this item. And I'll bring it back to council for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution number 20-3454, approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Lake Havasu Unified School District for the disclosure of school surveillance video footage in instances of catastrophic health and safety emergency.
Thank you. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item nine on the agenda, correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 9.1 is the fiscal year 2020-21 first quarter contracted agency reports. They're submitted for council review from Chief Doyle. Are there any questions for Chief? These were just filed for our review. All right, we'll move on to item 9.2, which is announce the vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and city council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport advisory board, one alternate pilot member, and the Board of Adjustment, four regular members, and three alternate members. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov.
Thank you. All right, item 9.3 is the city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. Members of the America's Best Communities Team met at 2121 McCollack for a special grum breaking ceremony for the first contest-funded project, which is called Nomadic, as coined by the PED. The New Co-Working Center Hub gives entrepreneurs, startups, and small businesses a place to grow in their businesses and in the community. And the proposed 900, excuse me, 9,100 square foot, single-story building will be located in the downtown area behind the Sanchez-Hawkins Fine Jewelers Building. Construction is set to begin early next year with a goal of opening in 2022. Between the three Rotary Clubs, the Quanis Club and Anderson Toyota, a total of $2,500 was generously donated to the Lake Havasu City Police Department for their annual Shop with a Cop event. In the photo, let's give thanks to these folks and all the members of each of the organizations. We see Vice Mayor Dave Lane, Stephanie Whitcar, the Quanis president, Kathy Stewart is with the LHC-PD Community Services. We have Sergeant Chris Sauner, we have Beth Titus, who's a member of the Citizens Police Academy, the Alumni Association, and of course Becky Goldberg, who's the president of the Lake Havasu City Rotary Club. Again, thanks for your generosity. This Shop with a Cop event is a worthwhile event to some kids that greatly deserve it. I'd like to thank animal control officers Chris Lookin and Jacob Rodriguez for speaking to Quanis of Lake Havasu City just last Thursday. Both shared their duties and responsibilities that they have as a member of the Animal Control Division of the Lake Havasu City Police Department, and they did a great job representing Lake Havasu City. The Lake Havasu City Fire Department, our chief, Pete, Peter Palapas, and education specialist Gina Gutierrez released a PSA for the Keep the Wreath Green program, and that's out on Facebook and on the website. The PSA can be viewed through those means, and I would play a little portion of that this evening. We do have Pete in the audience, so let him know what you think about it.
Hi, I'm Pete Palapas, Fire Chief with the Lake Havasu City Fire Department. This holiday season, we have a wreath hung up at Fire Station 1 located at 96 Pombo Boulevard with all green lights on it. This is done to help raise awareness for the community residents and visitors during the holiday season. For every holiday-related fire, we are changing a green light to red. Our goal is to keep all the lights on the wreath green. The following are just a few of the ways that you can help us keep the wreath green this holiday season.
Water your natural tree daily to prevent dry needles from becoming a fire hazard.
Place your tree at least three feet away from any heat sources like fireplaces, heaters, and candles.
Replace lights with worn or broken cords, and don't connect more strands than the manufacturer allows.
If using candles in your home, keep them where pets or children cannot knock them over, and never leave them unattended.
Turn off lights and blow out candles when you leave the room or go to bed.
When cooking, stay in the kitchen while you are frying, grilling, or boiling food. Keep a close watch on the stove and oven, and use a timer to remind you that you are cooking.
Have a kid-free zone of at least three feet around the stove. Now's a good time to test the batteries in your smoke alarm. Check the manufacturer date on the back of your smoke alarm. If they are more than 10 years old, it is time to replace them.
Always keep matches and lighters up high in a locked cabinet where children can't touch them. The Lake Havasu City Fire Department wishes you and your family a safe, happy, and healthy holiday season.
Thank you, Chief Palapas. Thank you, Gina Gutierrez. We want to remind the public that we have a save the date notification for the December 12th, that's 12/12. This is our annual Household Hazardous Waste Event. So when you look at the garage and you look at your, around the house, and you have paints, tires, antifreeze, oil, any rags that contain any of those substances. We have fluorescent light bulbs, other stains, varnishes, thinners, batteries, electronics, all those types of things. Now is the time of the year to get rid of them. So again, on December 12th, which is 12/12, it'd be from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And this event will take place at Fire Station Number Two. Previous years, we did a 900 London Bridge Road, and we changed the event to hopefully get the crowds and the line to move a little more smoothly and a little more safer approach from what we've had in previous years, just trying to maximize the efficiency of the event. But let everybody know that to enter, off of College Street. So 2065 is the address for Fire Station Two, 2065 North Kaowa Boulevard. But come up through the College Street and come up through the alleyway. We'll have signs in the area, we'll have people in the area to direct that traffic, but now's the time of the year. And we've had a lot of, a lot of volume the last couple of years, and we expect a big crowd again this year. So please arrive early. At the last coffee with the mayor and manager, Councilmember McCoy suggested that, based on some comments we were hearing from the public, which was fantastic, we had some questions about the loss of businesses and the number of business licenses that we have in Lake Havasu City. So we put together some numbers, and thank you to Kevin Moran and Customer Service and Admin Services Department for helping out. And we look at, what you see here is the numbers that represent the number of active business licenses in Lake Havasu City for the last five years. So you see that actually the last six years, so 2020 through 2015. You'll see of note that you see the very bottom is the totals. Take a look at the top. So when we couldn't, no longer regulate short-term rentals, those numbers are no longer providing these numbers. So that'll kind of skew that number you see at the bottom. But we've gone from, have held pretty steady, right around 5,000, a little over 5,000 active business licenses in Lake Havasu City over the course of the last six years, according to these numbers. Reflects the largest increase to largest decrease in the classification categories. And you can see that we've seen a total decrease from 2019 to 2020 is a 1.2 percentage point. So that's the difference between last year and this year. So we see a slight decrease of about 1%. And a couple of points of interest in relation to the 2020 versus 2019. For instance, you can see in the yellow highlight, it reflects the number of restaurants with bars that actually increased, the business licenses in Havasu increased by 6.8%. And restaurants increased from 2019 to 2020 by a total of 3.5%. So a slight increase in the number of restaurants, number of bars in Havasu from last year to this year. And then you'll see the orange highlight reflects the service categories, which is a 1.3% increase. That also includes gyms. And then you'll see on here, we look at the numbers and where the jumps are. You'll see that we have home-based businesses decreased by 18% over from 2019 to 2020. You see some decreases over the course of time. So that's, that was interesting, we take a look at the numbers, and we'll kind of dig into that to get more of an explanation of what's occurring there. But I thought it was good information to share with the public and the council. Speaking of coffee with the mayor and manager, we have the next one scheduled for December 4th at 8:30 a.m. This will be held at the Aquatic Center, and the Relics and Rods Hall will be socially distanced. And the event offers residents an opportunity to express issues, concerns, or questions that they have about the city. And does not require an RSVP, so simply come and join us on Friday, December 4th, at the Aquatic Center at 8:30 a.m. City offices are closed this Thursday, November 26th, and Friday, November 27th. Of course, for the Thanksgiving holiday, our police and fire department services that are provided by our police and fire professionals are unaffected, as always. We'll see the normal city offices will resume their normal schedules on Monday, November 30th. Trash pickup is affected for this holiday, so pay close attention. With the trash recycling services for Thursday, November 26th, will be collected on Friday, November 27th. And trash for Friday will be collected on Saturday. So if you normally get pickup on Thursday, that's going to happen on Friday this week. And normally on Friday will be picked up on Saturday this week, so take note of that. And a reminder that during this time throughout the month of December, our police officers provide enhanced traffic and DUI enforcement. It's from a grant that's awarded by the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety. So please enjoy the holiday festivities, but do responsibly and do not drink and drive. Arrange for a designated driver or utilize one of the many ride-sharing opportunities available throughout the city. And again, Happy Thanksgiving to the council, to the staff, and to the public. And finally, bringing forward the numbers, the most current numbers we have from Mojave County Public Health Department. You see the total number of cases cumulative that they report is that 1,624 numbers, 1,624 number, that's cumulative. But the number we focus on in terms of my report is the 274 cases that from my last report. And we have 264 individuals in Lake Havasu City who are currently in self-quarantine. So those are the active cases in Lake Havasu City. We're seeing a slight trend upward for the days that we have through November so far. And, but you can kind of see the trend that's depicted there. So, you know, please socially distance and do what's right for yourself and your loved ones around you. With that, Mayor and council, that concludes my report, and I'm available for questions if needed. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Knutson. Do any members of the council have any questions? All right, we'll move on to item 10, which is public hearings. We have item 10.1, Ratify Amendment Number Five to Agreement to Provide Services Supplies Pursuant to Cooperative Purchasing Contract with JP Morgan Chase Bank. Ms. Olson, are you?
I am here.
All right, sorry, hit the button too quick, so I'm back. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. This is extension of our existing contract that we have with JP Morgan Chase Bank to provide our banking services. It was set to expire October 22nd of 2020, and therefore, our staff is coming to you to extend that through this ratified agreement that will take us through April 30th of 2021. So between now and that time, should there not be another extension, we would then do an RFP for banking services and take action as a result of that. So there is no fiscal impact, the pricing remains the same, and staff is just requesting approval or ratification of this agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Olson? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the in-person public hearing. We did not receive any public comment prior to the meeting either, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to council.
Mayor.
Yes.
Motion.
Yes.
I move to ratify amendment number five to Agreement to Provide Services Supplies Pursuant to Cooperative Purchasing Contract with JP Morgan Chase Bank to provide services through April 30th, 2021.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember- Councilmember Lynn.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 11 is our current events. Do any council members have any council committee reports? No? All right, we'll move on to item 12, is our final call to the public. Would anyone like to address the city council at the final call to the public? Hearing none, we'll close the call to the public, and we did not receive any written comment. Item 13, future meetings. Our next regular meeting is on Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. And then our, that's all we have right now. So our next council meeting is December 8th at 6:00 p.m. Number 14, is there any future agenda items or future discussion items? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember Moses. We are adjourned. Be kind, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.